...to order, all of us are present. Ms. Collinsworth said she would be running a little late. First thing we're going to open up is the Pledge of Allegiance on the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Third item on the agenda is delegations and we have Malia, Malia Thompson. Is this a student mat? Would you like to have an open or a closed session? Okay, well, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I'm making a motion to go into executive session, sir.
Mr. Gibson made the motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Coleman, second. All those in favor, signal a bump saying aye. We will go into executive session. It is six oh one.
Okay, item number four is Hillsborough Elementary Principal and Staff for Achieving the Exceed Standard Performance Level of Academic Progress for Mathematics on the 2025 West Virginia Balance Score Card. Huh? Oh, yes, we need an emotion to come out of executive session.
I'm going to come out of exactly.
Mr. Gibson has made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. McCombe, second it. We are coming out of Executive Session Act 651. Okay, we are back in regular session and I just read item number four. So Hillsborough, you are.
Yeah, well, let's get the board up here first and then I'll present that motion.
Okay.
Please.
All right. We have to get up.
Yes, we have to go.
Let's take your time and be careful. They're all saying.
Come here. You ain't gonna mean I'll lean on you. I'm looking on this. We can all hold soon. Get in here, ladies. Back to the guys, look good. Why not?
So, my certificate is for public recognition of Hillsborough Elementary School and staff for achieving the exceed standards performance level in academic progress mathematics on the 2025 WBDE balance score card. Not a lot of schools did that. We had a school that did that and I thank you for your hard work and your dedication to our students and to achievement.
In there.
In the middle of them. And I was like, you look like this beautiful lady.
We'll be in time to go.
Thank you.
That's pretty cool. Yes. I'd have five schools get that.
It'd be nice.
All right. School Improvement Updates. Dr. Williams, reading of the mission statement and goals.
So, in light of our achievement at Hillsborough Elementary, and we do have excellent things going on in all of our schools, but our mission at Pocahontas County Schools strives to provide an engaging and supportive and learning environment where every student is valued, empowered, and equipped to reach their full potential. Our goals for the 2526 school year is improve operational capacity, will improve system wide to address all non-compliance indicators for our special education students. All Pocahontas County Schools will meet annual growth targets in ELA and math, which we see somebody exceeded their growth target. All Pocahontas County Schools will engage parent and community members in opportunities to acquire information, knowledge, and skills to support their students' overall education and behavior at school and at home. Um, the number of chronically absent students will decrease by 50 students countywide, no less than 10% of students at each school. And all outdated policies and job descriptions will be updated along with the West Virginia Board of Education coach.
Ready for B?
I'm ready for B.
B is Dr. Williams' overview or presentation of LSIC on the implementation of strategy plans policy 2322.
So, one of the things that um we were asked to improve on um was LSIC. And providing the appropriate documentation that we are focusing on attendance, on discipline, and on academic achievement. So, to there at the top of the chart, you can see what that our schools are to engage in presenting to us. And at the bottom of the chart is policy 2322, which is the West Virginia System and Support and Accountability Policy. And each of those outlines the LSIC and a primary role of LSIC at schools is to monitor, is to develop, monitor, and implement, and help the school with their strategic plan. So therefore, in order to do that, we need to engage them regularly. And the period of time that we're going to engage them is after each benchmark assessment. This will also meet federal programs compliance. Um, one of our compliance indicators that we didn't perform well on was monitoring school strategic plans throughout the year and the implementation. So, I am excited to hear from the schools, not just because of policy and compliance, because it's a relationship thing between you and the board, and it gives you time to talk about the great things that's going on at your school. I think it's ready.
Ready for you, well, your Hillsborough Elementary LSIC, strategic plan, achievement, discipline.
Can you wear a green shirt? I love it.
It's current day at Hillsborough Elementary.
Yes, I love it, yes.
It's current day here too.
We're going to start at the first page. So the first page is introducing our LSIC team for the 2025 and 2026 school year. So I'm Amanda Buzzard and I am our LSIC Chair. And then we have Ms. Spencer. And we have Ruth Taylor, who is our community member who is also here to support us with the. And then you can see the rest of our staff and community members on the page. So let's go to our student achievement data. That's the next slide. So this is our testing data for the 2024-2025 school year. So that includes kindergarten through fifth grade. And this is our proficiency rating for ELA and for math. So our kindergarten's at 92% for ELA and 70% for math. First grade was at 40% for ELA and for math. Second grade's at 38% for ELA, 53% for math. Third grade, 58% for ELA, 75% math. Fourth grade, 64% ELA, 73% math. Fifth grade, 88% for ELA and 76% for math. This was our testing data from the 2024-2025 year. So that was the end of last year, the proficiency rate at all of all of the ELA and math for all of the students. This is the testing data for the 2025-2026 school year for our initial benchmark for I-Rate. So that was the beginning of the school year when they took their I-Rate benchmark. And all grades, kindergarten, fifth grader on there. And so we, what I would like to point out is this is the beginning of the school year. So they're coming into their grade. They haven't been taught where they're at yet. So their proficiency rate is for ELA, kindergarten was at 43%, and math was at 11%. First grade was 0% ELA and 0% math. Second grade was 14% ELA and 0% math. Third grade was 30% ELA and 10% math. Fourth grade is 40% ELA, 30% math, and fifth grade was 45% ELA and 36% math.
The thing is being used kindergarten, the ones in the garden are poor.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, so that's the, those moving upgrades. So that's those preferential rates. So they're not yet taught at their grade level. So that's them coming from their summer slide two. Then the next slide that we come to is our intervention areas of focus that we have right now. So this is reading and language art. And intervention is like small group work, the students that we chart, that we pull aside and work, you know, more with and on specific skill sets. So we break it down into different areas. So the phonics, we have 51% of students proficient in. Then we have our encoding. And we don't have a percentage there because that is what our target goal is working on right now in our small group intervention. So that's what we're currently really focused on in our intervention groups. Vocabulary, we have 36% proficient and comprehension is informational text, 32% proficient. But also because encoding isn't really assessed for the little guys, like whenever they do their I-Rate benching, right, they don't do a writing. Only third through fifth grade do that for the state standardized assessment. So we just put that in our intervention plan. Then the next area is our intervention focus for math. And then at math, we have numbers and operations. We have 16% kids efficient. Um, we have algebraic, algebraic, sorry, thinking, 19% proficient. Geometry, 23% proficient. And then the last thing we have on there is our fact fluency. So we do a fact fluency every, well, this is our third year for our children and they absolutely love it. We usually do something called a teacher torture, where all the kids who master their flat facts for the whole year, so they're standardized, like if you're in first grade and you get all the standards met for first grade, then you get your ticket and your ticket goes into a box and you get to pick something. If you want to tie your face in the teeth, your pie, your teeth are in the face and they absolutely love it. So they work for that and they get their facts and they're on top of it. So they love that. So we're going to do our third year of our fact fluency challenge this year. And it really helps, like it kind of gives you a little intervention piece just doing that. And they love it. So we, we're going to keep up on that. And then students in need of intervention. So students benchmark scores that are below state recommendation for projected proficiency. So that's the cut scores that the state handed down. The students who did not meet those scores. And that is for this year, which I really love because I don't see a lot of numbers on that page. Because kindergarten has zero students who needed intervention, who needed any, they all met the cut score. They all exceeded. So first grade had zero students. They all met. Second grade had three, two for ELA. Third grade had three for ELA, zero for math. Fourth grade had zero for ELA and one for math. And fifth grade had four for ELA and four for math. So those are pretty good numbers considering the cut score and video. All right, then we'll move on to our attendance, our attendance data. So our monthly attendance rates for September was 96.8%. For October, it was 93.5%. For November, it was 95.7%. And year to date, we're 95.9% all at school. That's really good, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
So I think what, what I, what I had talked about with Ms. Spencer was I think it's our attendance incentive, what we have going on. So we have a little, kind of like a little race to attendance. So every month, we do a race to attendance. So if you come to school, then each class, we have a wall, an attendance wall, and we put up each grade level. So there's kindergarten, there's even preschool, preschool and kindergarten and first grade. And then they have little spots where if they come to school, we do a little theme every year, every month. So last month, it was a race, a race to attendance. So they had little cars. So if your whole class was there, the whole, for just one day, you got a car to put on the wall. And so if you fill it up, you're 30, however many days you're there, you got a car keychain at the end of the month. And then you got your picture taken and they were all, they all loved that. Like last, I think in October, we did tacos. So it was like, talk about attendance. And they all got little tacos that are scratch and snip. So they were all, so then you have students coming to school and they're like, I want that taco. Mom, I'm going to get the taco. So we can't go to the doctor this year. You're going to have to wait until next month. And they really love it. So I think that has really been helpful for attendance rate. But then this needs to point out, whatever we had hands, foot, and mouth, which dropped our attendance rate, but it's still 93%. So I think that's still great. But we have 16% that are only chronically absent. So and that includes kids that are like, who have.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's the tacos at all. I think it's the staff that like.
I think, I second that. I think so. And then we'll go to our discipline. Our discipline incident summary year to date. So students with 100% conduct to 82% and bus incidents are at 43%. So most of our, most of our discipline really is not school related. It's on the, I mean, it is the school related, but it's on the bus. And it's issues because they're little guys. They're sitting on the bus for 30 minutes, 40 minutes. I mean, they live in Pocahontas County. So how can they expect the little five-year-old to sit in their seat and stay in their seat and not move your seat, out of your seat for 30 or 40 minutes? So that is a lot of our bus incidents. But also I liked how Dr. Williams talks about routines and procedures that you have in place before you even go into teaching or before even start school. You have to teach those routines and tell them, all right, you're going on the bus. What do you do on the bus? What do you, you know, the bus driver? All right, guys, I expect your bottoms to stay on the seats. You know what I mean? I mean, they can't be teachers. They can't have their eyes all the time on a child. They need to be focused on driving. But those things could be implemented to help us out getting our bus incidents under control. But it's really not that, not that bad considering those bus incidents and little guys not keeping their bottoms where they're supposed to be.
At hospitals, we had 30 incidents, so 30 write-ups. One was just one really bad day that I had a sub-bus driver and six kids decided they were going to do flip-walks in the aisle. So there's not a chance to do this in one bad day.
That's the day you want to do it.
It's pretty neat, really.
You wouldn't admire it.
Yeah, like you've never done it.
I can't say that.
Cheer of the lawn.
Yeah.
No.
And then our last slide is our strategic plan first. So in reading and math, 85% of students will either be at grade level proficient or will have achieved annual typical growth on benchmarks by the final assessment. And by January of 2026, less than 25% of our students will be chronically absent. That is our plan. That's the way we're in. Keep it. You guys have enough time? Any questions?
Very good.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job. I do need to recognize Ms. Taylor. She was on the board for how many years, Ruth? Nine years? I'm with a good board member.
We have good support at Hillsborough Elementary.
You are a former board member as you're.
We have great support.
She knows what goes on behind the scenes.
Yes.
They are um doing great things at Hillsborough Elementary and to be commended for the efforts they're putting into their students. I do want to just explain to the board members that we do assess the students within the first 30 days of school to see where the summer regression has occurred. And that's why we identify who needs intervention because some students do not get any educational activities. And that early intervention makes a difference to them throughout the year. It's not a reflection of anything else. Then we're just measuring where they are so we can teach them to where they need to be.
I'm anxious to see that, that chart again at the end of the year.
I know. Yeah, me too.
Ms. Taylor, do you have something?
Yes, it is just a little concern. I think it's something that can be easily corrected, but there's times that Hillsborough, when there's nobody in the office because the principal, the secretary, and all of them either have training or working half-ban somewhere else, the counselor and all of them. And if somebody calls about getting a child on another bus or something, they don't get the message. Or there's nobody monitoring the front entrance. And there needs to be some kind of a schedule where that at least one of those people is at Hillsborough in the evenings or something, instead of everybody being in another school or out of training or something.
I think that's an excellent point.
It was, it was just the, an incident of a couple of kids, not, the message didn't go through and they got on the bus to the other parent or something. But that's, that's one of the, it's a safety concern basically. And I think that could be handled this with a little bit of scheduling. And I know you have a counselor out and all that thing, kind of thing. So it's, it's not a, not a difficult situation. I remember when Sue was the principal and she had a class to teach. And I said, you know, incidents don't happen when the principal's sitting in the office. They happen when you got to leave the classroom for the kids.
True.
Absolutely.
That, that, that was our concern, but we are so proud of the staff at Hillsborough. I mean, they really go above and beyond.
Me too.
And they're, they're fun.
Did we get the new furnace for Hillsborough?
One, we have one boiler in. The other one's been ordered and we'll be going in, but they have heat and everything is working appropriately. And everything is in the works of being done. And we will work on that scheduling thing. That's not a problem. We'll be in contact.
This is kind of, it's something that needs to be looked at, I think.
Absolutely.
Because we know people down there and they know who not to let in the front door for the most part, but you can't get in the front door.
Did you get your air conditioners hooked up? Partially, so it's a work in progress.
Should I help with heating as well?
I'll say heat too.
I think over time it'll save us money to be able to not turn it on. But we didn't reach this.
Darren's got them all put, put in, not hooked up. What, what is?
He has them on the wall, so now wiring needs.
Is in there and does that? Okay. I knew that he was down there working on them. I just didn't check with him. Thank you for.
We're not supposed to be partial. But I'm sorry. You can't take the partiality out of me.
Well, there's five of us. Listen, we each got a school, so we're doing fine. Something else to, um. Mr. Gibson was in here and back in the, said it. Wasn't there something with the windows or something in the gym that needs repaired, replaced or something as you?
Yes, the windows in the gym are the old, old windows up on the top. And we had, um, thirty years ago, painted them and then spray foam the outside. Well, the birds beak through all the spray foam, so now we're down to single pane windows again. Um, it's very windy and they leak around, uh, two of the windows have fans installed and they leak around there. So the rain goes straight down, we're fine, but if it wasn't all, um, water goes right in on the gym floor. Um, so they definitely need fixed.
Sir Gibson has ordered the supplies for those repairs. Um, I talked to him about that maybe week before last. Um, not for that reason, but because aesthetically on the outside, I feel like it could look different. And I wanted, I wanted to, I wanted to be fixed for a safety as well, but aesthetically. You know, you're in a very beautiful small town and our building needs to reflect that we're taking care of it. We're not putting the same thing back. Yeah, we're not putting the same thing back on it. I believe, I don't, I don't want to speak out of turn. The, the phone that's on the outside, we just, we have to remove that a certain way. Yes, I wasn't going to say it. Yes, but if we, we are in the process and I definitely think we can make it more aesthetically pleasing. And also fix the other things.
Thank you all, great job.
Thank you.
Federal program monitoring updates.
Okay, so our most recent federal program monitoring went exceptionally well. With a few areas that we have to tighten our belts on and work on. And as I'm looking through the report, most of the areas of concern. Are related to, we have to look at our county strategic plan. That was submitted last year by June thirtieth. And I did not make any revisions to that because I knew we were getting the federal programs monitoring. And I wanted it to be evaluated on what was done, but between now and December thirtieth, we will make those revisions. Title two, professional development. Um, we had a finding there that we have to make a recommendation for, which we have done exceptional with professional development this year. Title three, which is our L students, we don't have any, but we still have to have a professional development plan in case we get one. So we will do something with that, with our teachers on that. Um, and then we had a couple of findings on McKenna veto and foster children. Uh, professional development on that again and a brochure and I believe that's Julie's area and she already has the brochure done. And sent out and we're ready to submit that and we're going to also make sure it's in the schools. Um, and then the final one was a time and effort thing. And that's just something that I have to work out as the superintendent on how we're going to do time and effort. But overall, we had so many indicators that we were, we met the, the benchmark on, so it went well.
Any questions for Dr. Williams? Number six, consent agenda items. A is approval of the agenda. B is payment of bills subject to additions, deletions or other changes prior to the board meeting. A, payment of vendor listing, a hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and thirteen forty-nine. B, November the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five employee payroll, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars and eight cents. C is grant awards and D is budget adjustments. Do I have a motion? Mr. Combs made the motion, do I have a second? Dr. Hollins, we're seconded. Any questions on the consent agenda items? Here, go ahead.
Can I tell you, I put an extra document in here for you, Sarah, and I worked it out?
Yes.
If you go across the vendor list. Um, last meeting, the board had said, we would like to know a breakdown of. The funding sources for each of the things that are being done. So we broke it down by the steps that you learned about at the school board association meeting, which is the six steps. And how much is being paid, all that. And then how much is being paid out of local funds, which is our tax dollars. And then how much is being paid out of, uh, special project funds, which is your federal programs funds and your special education. So that you can see that where each group of items is coming to get that total one hundred and forty thousand dollars. Is that kind of what we were. To know? Okay.
Anybody got any questions for? All those in favor, sing about saying aye. Motion carries. Uh, who are we at? Staff and personnel matters, do I have a motion? Mr. McCollum has made the motion, I have a second. Dr. Hollins, we're seconded. Ollie, you're up.
So we started with the second, two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, we've shown the professional recommendations that are still positions in the law field. We have a current rate of fourteen. We do have some, um, applicants in some of these positions that we're working. Getting those positions filled. Of the following, uh, substitute teacher, Perkins County School, the state basic professional salary for the twenty twenty-six school year. As needed is Shelby Snead, resignation of Virginia Shaw and a substitute teacher in aid of Perkins County Schools effective November the fourteenth. Twenty twenty-five. Extracurricular recommendations are the Twenty First Century Grant Positions, contingent upon adequate number of students for the program. Teachers for the Green Bank Elementary Middle School, Kimberly Califaro. And teacher at Perkins County High School is going to be Kena Tracy's going to work with them some up there as well. Then again, employment of Kena Tracy as a homebound teacher with twenty-five, twenty-six school year at a range twenty-five dollars per hour as needed. Elizabeth Taylor is a dollar touch for the little basketball at Green Bank Elementary Middle for the twenty-five, twenty-six season. Zelda Proft is the one dollar touch for the boys' basketball at Green Bank Elementary Middle for the twenty-five, twenty-six season. Any manual certification and that has come through.
What is that of, of the CTE position that? We have interviews, yes, we have interviewed for the position. We had a couple of viable applicants and we have an applicant that. Um, is in the decision-making process if they would like to take that or not. And Dr. Combs will be following up with them via an email, so we will have a decision at the next board meeting. Thank you. You're welcome.
Uh, pro officer.
Yes.
That's something we need to talk about.
Yes, I was going to, uh, it's on the agenda. I saw, I know I put it on here, I just.
No, it's on there, I seen it.
Okay. It's on the, uh, personnel and then I believe I put it on there.
Item nine on business?
Old business.
Oh, but, oh, it's next, it's coming up, so we need to. Okay, anybody got any questions on personnel? Hearing none, all those in favor, six of us saying aye. Okay, superintendent updates, discussion of special education updates.
So we have officially submitted all of the documentation that we addressed the special circumstances review. Um, I submitted that before, um, Thanksgiving break, so it was off of our plates. And hopefully we will be hearing soon if they need any additional information and what the county status will be. But everything has been done, everything has been submitted and we're just waiting on the review from the state department.
B is discussion of public school support program updates.
Alright, so when we were at the school board association, um, conference. We were, if you'll take one and pass it down. We, they were in, and just go to page eight, um, and this is all online for anybody that wants to look it up. If you go to the West Virginia Department of Education, you go to fiscal resources, twenty twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six data. You click on that, you can find, uh, the comps for public school support programs. So it is all public information. Um, it's just easier to give you the handout rather than take you to the website. So on the last page, we are looking at professional support, student support personnel. And we're looking at how many are funded and how many, uh, the number of employees that exceeds that limit. And I underlined and circled that for you, so it'd be easier to see. So we are one point three over for, um, support personnel. And that is counselors, nurses and social workers, I think fall into that classification. When we get to professional educators, we are five point two eight over. And there's some other things that goes into professional educators. It's not necessarily just the number of bodies that is in the schools. Cause I reported that we were one under as far as the actual people. But when it comes to funding positions, the state department funds us at two hundred day contracts. And then everybody that has more than two hundred days, that adds up to people. That adds up to people, that adds up to positions. And then the county board gives supplements for various things that has, that was approved, um, maybe last year or the year before. And those supplements added up to, I think, around a hundred and seventy thousand, which also adds into more positions. So that puts us five point eight two positions over in professional. So that's six, seven, but when we go over to service personnel and we look, um, we're funded for. Eighty-four and we are actually a little bit under, so that gives us a little bit of wiggle room in our budget. Cause we're seven point five five under. With that stated, this budget is not all inclusive of all of our personnel. We also fund personnel through federal programs. And we have nine additional personnel that are funded out of other sources, federal programs or special ed. What does this mean? There is still, and we received in a superintendent's updates. The viability of federal funding is something we're going to have to think about again this year. It's been frozen and state, and that also includes special education. Cause they're, they're rearranging the department, uh, the US Department of Education. So I wanted you to have these numbers to see. Um, we do have vacancies in our county that have not been filled. And in looking at those vacancies, um, moving folks to areas that we, we need people. And just let, letting attrition take through some things. For example, the assistant principal at Green Bank Elementary Middle School. Um, that is a job because it's federally funded, we will not continue on next year. So that will take up one of these positions, if that makes sense, and pull that off the plate. But those are our numbers standing, um, right now. Sarah and I have started the work of reviewing supplements, um, very diligently. We looked at med, med supplements, we, we think we can cut back on there and start saving some money. So we are reviewing, um, other factors that play into the budget. If there are any questions, comments, concerns, anything I can help you with in regards to that.
Any questions? Ribbon cutting ceremony at PCHS, December the sixteenth?
Yes, we are going to have a ribbon cutting ceremony at PCHS to celebrate the gym, to invite the public out. Um, uh, we are going to start at five o'clock. And we're going to put the announcement out. I just wanted to make sure that the board was one hundred percent okay with that. And we have a home basketball game, boys and girls, so we should have, um, a high attendance. Um, we will, huh?
It's a snow day. We're going to have a snow day.
Thank you, thank you, President Grass. Um, um, we are also going to showcase the work that's been done in the office and the bathrooms. Because we've done a lot of things that the public needs to be aware that the board has done at PCHS. So the way I imagine it going is that, um, Principal Klein will, a principal. Campbell will open it. I would like to recognize, recognize our maintenance guys for all of the beginning of the schoolwork. They worked on the weekends, they worked at nights, they really pulled through for me and Director, um. Uh, Gibson, that was thanks night. Then I will give a, uh, recognize them and then President Grounds, would you like to address the public and say something? Would any of the other board members like to be on the agenda that night?
Emery's got it.
I'll do.
Alright.
I don't have a problem talking, talking.
Then Mr. President Grounds will, um, say something.
How long a speech, one hour, half hour? I'll put my speech writer.
We'll start a ballgame. We're gonna start a ballgame.
I'll, I'll put my speech writer on that. Take care of it.
So, um, because of that, at the end of the agenda, you can see that the next board meeting we will also have at PCHS. To accommodate our schedule of being there, because it would be difficult to start that at five and get back here at six.
So it's, that's a board meeting night too?
Yes.
Oh, that's, makes it perfect. We won't get to see the ballgame. We'll be a board meeting. We can get to it in a hurry. Okay, old business, item number nine, do I have a motion? Mr. McCollum made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. McNabb, seconded, uh, you all can read all these, uh, anybody got any questions? I've read them over, have you all read them over? The, the only one I want to discuss is L in the S, yeah, discussion, a new action permission to post. For one point five positions of security guard or school resource officers.
Okay, so.
Uh, what I wanted to do was, I think we would better off if we post that as a service personnel.
Okay.
Than we would a professional service now, because we, if we do it as a professional, whoever we hurt will probably have to go through the police academy and. And all the stuff, but the contents to that, I'm not sure. I'm just not familiar with that.
Um. The law says, I brought, I brought the law code with it per professional or service.
Okay.
They all have to meet the same qualification, so let me pass this out to you. Um, and that's in code, it's in House Bill, uh, twenty-one sixty-four. And I did take time to meet with the sheriff's office yesterday. And encode the qualifications to be the school safety officer. Is you have to pass a background check. Conf- confirmation of the officer's prior law enforcement service, it meets the ten-year requirements. Certification by the director of the West Virginia Division of Protective Services at meaning pre-employment and in-service training standards. Required to complete annual training with the local county sheriff's office. And they also recommended a polygraph test and a psychological test. And I told the sheriff that we would ask them to complete both of those. Because things show up on those that have not shown up on the, a background check. Confirm that the officer was in good standing when they retired or resigned as a law enforcement officer. Um, while they will not have the power to arrest, they do have the power to reasonably detain. As long as the, uh, it's a breach of peace, and I misspelled that there. And they will need to meet all the requirements to carry a concealed weapon under this code. Um, so regardless of if they're service or professional in code, they have to meet. in code, they have to meet this, these standards. So we can post it either way you would like. Um, after further investigation into it, we had discussed one for the high school in Green Bank, but I feel like safety is important countywide. And we should have one and a half at least or two to make sure that we have somebody between our three schools in this area and we have their presence. Um, and I just wanted to make sure that what you want, how you want me to do it. And we would prefer to post it locally on, on, through the board and you approve that.
Yeah, yeah, same way with our everybody else. Yes. I, I don't have any problem with that. Uh, how do you want to say, post it, the service or profession?
We can post it service and I can check with our lawyer to make sure that it's okay to post it service.
Or you said we were under a service, not anybody.
Yes, we are.
That's what I'm saying. That's what made me think of that. And service personnel is cheaper than professional service personnel too.
If it had been professional, now service will make these numbers look a little different. Um, so let me pass these down to you, because I asked Sarah to do some, some work for us. Um.
Yeah, I want to see some numbers.
These numbers will not be the same.
This is, we, I can easily see this, the cost of this program escalating immensely. You know, we would talk about buying equipment for this person and, and training and a vehicle.
Oh, no, we're not doing all that stuff.
No, no.
You don't know you are yet.
He's not going to buy a vehicle. He better have his own or she had better have her own.
This isn't a school resource officer. This is a school safety officer that runs through the county, not through any other law enforcement agency. They only have to participate in training with the other agency.
Well, you know, I'd still like to discuss the budget with this.
What kind of a budget do you put on the safety of our kids? Um, uh, that's a legitimate question because.
We, we have a budget for this, for this visit, for this job, you know, to include, uh, salary and all the things that come with, you know.
I can provide that for you, Mr. Gibson.
I'd like to see that.
I will provide that for you. Um.
Salary.
It'll be less than that now. And this is the salary, Mr. Gibson, that I handed this paper out if it had been professional. Can you, off the top of your head, tell us what a, a service personnel, generally average salary for a service personnel is? It would probably be an H. It would probably be H.
Probably be an H grade.
Yes. We need to look and see. Probably thirty.
That's what I'm saying, that's.
And I have to make sure we can hire him as a service. So I need to do all some background checking. I need to look at that. Yes.
Well, whatever background they have, if it does, it's going to shoot up. Some of these people's got a lot of years.
Well, there's a number of years.
Bring in for what it is.
Something probably says you've been on or X number of years, some previous.
Service, we don't. Generally, we don't do that for service.
Usually don't.
We do that.
But if, if we, if we're going, and I'm just throwing this number out there, Sarah, if we're saying thirty thousand. You know, you're saving them a lot of money to the service personnel. You're putting their head to heart too, because you would have the because you got to pay their insurance and all that stuff anyway.
They quote the, they quote the family with children as fast. So that would be the highest to go on and give you a bottom line instead of.
Yes.
You know, I, I didn't want to give you one with just a boy and then they say got the rest of you.
What, what I'm looking at, we'll have to check. You'll have to check this, make sure. If, I, I would think if we was going hard at a service personnel wage of thirty thousand, and I, the way I look at the PIA stuff, we have to pay anyway.
You do, but it won't be on that rate.
It'll be cheaper rate, of course, I understand that, but you're ahead, instead of having one point five, to have two. Because you're already paying the insurance, whether it's service or professionally the one.
That's correct.
So you're, you're ahead to go ahead and, and hire the two.
And one would be full time at the three schools, uh, Marlison Elementary, Marlison Middle, and Hillsborough. And give us, yeah, and the other one would be Green Bank and the high school.
And them schedules should not be published when they're going to where.
Where is the grand?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson, we will do so that you will know how much the diagram is, how much the other.
We'll get you a full budget.
Well, we're a long ways away.
This is something we're creating here. We need to, we need to have a, a budget for.
This is something I've lobbied for, for a long time. I think it's something we need to do.
And it is sustainable. So would I have permission to go ahead and post it? So we can start the process and then if you don't want to hire them after you see the budget, you can just not hire them.
I agree with that.
Okay.
All right.
So I'll have the budget at the next meeting.
Any questions? Any other questions? All those in favor, six, five, saying aye. Motion carries. New business approval of, do I have a motion? Mr. McCollum's made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Mr. McNabb seconded. Approval fundraisers. That's A. B is approval out of county field trips. C is discussion possible action, CEFP updates. D is approval of contracts with, what's that word?
Neo.
For wheelchair lift maintenance at PCHS and Martin Elementary School. Any questions on the new business? Hearing none, all those in favor saying aye. Motion carries. Mr. Gibson, board members' remarks.
Hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving. Hope everybody's ready to come back to school. I, I do have some, some parents wanting to, that's following the schedule pretty close. Specifically, the, the, we turn back to school and they want to know, they want to follow the, um, they want to know if there's any differences in our scores after we did the midterms after Christmas break, basically.
We, those have not been completed.
Well, I know. So, but you know, we want, they, these folks want to track that. They want to see what the difference was starting the school in first of August or wait until after Labor Day. You know, that's what it's looking at. Um, and that's, that should be pretty easy for us to figure out.
Yes, sir.
Um, excited about the gym floor and I'll be up there soon. And that's all I have.
Mr. McCollum? Jump over. Uh, I'm good tonight. Mr. McNabb?
Yeah, I would like to thank Dr. Williams and, and Director Gibson for the school call they made today. Uh, I totally backed your decision. Uh, I think we've gotten in the past few years, we've gotten where if they're calling for a storm in the Midwest, we just call school off. Uh, I think we need to reevaluate that. I think you and Mr. Gibson are doing a great job with that. And no matter what you decide or we decide, uh, you're going to have people complain, but, uh, like we were talking earlier, we're here to, we're here to teach the kids. Don't get me wrong, their safety is first and foremost. But we're here to teach them and we're here to get them ready for the real world. I used to have a scene where I worked, you know, a lot of guys, they thought they were in fantasy land. They could just do what they wanted to, when they wanted to. Well, guess what? The real world doesn't work like that. Uh, I worked my, my entire career and never had a snow day, never had a weather delay. I've traveled all over the country and you got to plan ahead. And I mean, if you, I hate to say this, but if you don't like where we're at, here, you, you chose to live here. This is part of it. So leave a little early, plan ahead, whatever you have to do, but we cannot teach the children until they are at the school. And we have to keep the schools open. So that, that, that's all I've got to say. Thank you for your, your due diligence on that.
Thank you.
Dr. Hollinsworth?
Um, I'm going to follow up on Frosty, what he said, because I personally drove out of Hillsborough across Kennison Mountain this morning, and I waited until I saw school buses. But I didn't have to be in a hurry, so it was like quarter till eleven. And I had no trouble. Kennison was snow covered. The whole top of it was snow covered. Not quite as bad as it was coming home, but still, I mean, parents who complained about that. Oh, what do they want you to do? You can't get your kids to school? Well, they will shut down school. Uh, I'm thinking you can't do that.
Thank you.
Well, I know, I know, y'all were at the times last week, but fifty years ago, I think it was, they had two pieces snow and below zero and it closed school the first time in two years.
I was on that bus.
That one bus of the county.
Honestly, I was, I was going to school at that time. Now, I'm not kidding. And they brought a dozer in to open up the road because a grader hung up, or the hill rode up there. They brought a grader in and it was over top of the fence post. I remember. I remember. And we didn't have to go to school and we still go dead.
Imagine what's that day to you?
Like I'm saying, if, if you get to get the state road and kudos to the state road department. You know, they, if you give them a couple hours, two or three hours, they're going to have it cleared. You know, unless it's something major, unless it's a major storm, so, you know.
Well, I think, I think one thing has changed that is lawsuits and, and all kinds of stuff through the state, you know, and you got to be very careful what you do. And it makes your job a lot harder.
Yes, it does.
It does. But I would just like to say thank you to you again today and, and this board and the direction that we're headed in as you a superintendent and I'll give this, I'm done left some tweets there too, but I think we're going in the right direction. Don't mean there not going to be some heat cups. Because whatever you do, there's going to be some heat. But, uh, I'm sure in my mind that you will get it figured out and I think you have the full support of the board behind you in doing that.
Thank you.
And with that, our next board meeting will be December the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five, at the Perkins County High School in the library at six o'clock. Now, wait a minute, there's something wrong with that.
We're doing the board meeting.
Ribbon ceremonies at five.
Yeah, there we go. It's, it's right. Okay, uh, I was looking to see if it was the same date.
Yes.
That's what I was looking at and it is. So we'll get an agenda on that, so I'll make sure I'm here and we are hereby adjourned.